Guys. Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the Rochester School Board meeting for October twenty fifth. And this time, we're going to call the meeting to order and we'll start the flag slip. Ledley.
Do the flag. United States of America. What nation under God individual.
We'll do our roll call. And Michael.
Present.
Right. Lana.
Here.
All right, Thomas.
Here.
And Grant.
Here.
And Neil Turner, and the president of the school board, and I am present. Oh, and we have our student reps here. We have Grace. And we have Kendra. Excellent. All right, at this time. We have no additions or deletions to our agenda this evening. And number three on our agenda, as it always is, is public comment. For any items that are on our agenda tonight. Do we have anyone in the room?
No one assigned.
No one online either. Okay.
I did.
All right. Yeah, I just want to make sure that any public people that are watching this meeting later, this is the time where you can have the opportunity to speak about items that are on our agenda. Thank you very much. All right. This time, and move on to our consent agenda. And we have four items on there. Someone like to make a motion? To approve our consent agenda tonight?
Who to approve?
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, been first and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed. All right, moving right along, we are on number five. And we are doing reports, our school improvement plan presentations.
Second, we should have students in here.
Uh oh.
So.
Well, we should, we want to go back, we want to go back, or?
Let's make a quick amendment to change, to add their students to the agenda.
Yep, I will approve. A big motion to approve that? Second. All right, first and seconded, we approve, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, none opposed? Oh, all right, kids, you're up.
Okay, so this week at the high school is our spirit week, our Halloween spirit week. Monday was pajama slash zombie, you know, spirit Halloween Monday, PJ day. And then Tuesday was Barbie versus Ken. Today was witch versus wizard. Tomorrow is villain vicious hero, and then Friday is color wars, which grade and staff have a specific color that they wear. And this is all leading up to our Monster Mash Dance that we're having on Saturday. The leadership is putting it on, AKA me, and I'm really excited for it. Sales haven't been too good yet, but I mean, I've heard lots of people say that they want to go, but we just haven't sold the tickets yet, so I don't know. Today, we have a band and choir concert going on currently as we speak. So we'll see how that went. And we had financial aid night on October ninth, which I think was very successful. I went. Did you go? Yeah, we both went, saw lots of people there, learned lots of stuff. And then we have our first club day tomorrow during CSR, where they go to. It's like club time just during class rather than after school, so that everyone has the opportunity and chance to be in a club. And we start that tomorrow, and that will be every Thursday of the last month, but I think they're trying to make it. More than that eventually, but Miles our first time. I think that's kind of all we had talked about. You have anything else to add?
I don't think.
That's pretty much it.
All right, thank you. Anything, Grace? Anything else to add?
Um, no, I think we mainly covered.
Okay. Notice the girls aren't vaping in the bathrooms anymore?
I, not as far as I've seen.
Wonderful. I didn't remember that was a point of conversation last month.
Yeah.
Like bad girls. All right, well, thank you, ladies, very much for your reports. All right, and so now we're moving on to reports and school improvement plan presentation.
Yes.
Yeah.
So our principals are each gonna come and share a little bit of information about the school improvement plans that they have in their buildings this year. So first up, we have.
Do we want to let the high school go so he can go to the concert?
Oh, is. Are you heading out to the concert?
If I'm done in time, I would like to go.
There we go. Give down, and thank you for asking.
If that works for everyone else, but yes, absolutely.
So we should be honest, we'll present.
We get down here soon enough, I plan on going over.
If we're going, go ahead, go, you're. You're fine.
I'll, I'll go after this, because I, yeah, I also wanted to, I need to take pictures for your book, so there we go.
So this will be our, this is our plan for this year. We have three main focuses. Our first one is, we can all read, but essentially it comes down to, we want our students to become more literate. And literacy isn't just reading or writing, it's listening and speaking as well. And so that's going to be an emphasis with all of our kids. We're going to use our SBA. Data and our iReady data from the ninth graders kind of track and see how we're making progress. Additionally, we're going to. Or have we done a pre, pre-conversation with teachers and said, how many literacy tools were you using last year? And we were getting that data right now. How many are you using since we, because we've done. About six, seven hours of training already in literacy. How many are you using now after having that training? And then in the spring, we'll come back and ask that question again to see how much more they've added to their belt. So basically what we're doing is we're training our teachers. How to use these tools so that we can better engage our students. And so I'm kind of hitting this. So one of the big things that we're using is obviously visual organizers. Kids are very different from us when we were kids. We all sat there, teacher talked, we wrote down our notes dutifully, and that was how it was done. Now we have numerous ways of engaging our students, and so these are a couple of the things that we're doing. Visual organizers. Are ways for our students to kind of, it's taking notes, but it's like withdrawing, and so it's for those kids, a tactile activity where you're actually doing something. That connects more for them than it is where if you're just writing it down. And then vocabulary is huge, obviously, the better vocabulary you have, the more access you have to information. And literacy is the foundation of all learning, and so as we are looking in all of our classrooms, it's not just in our English language arts classes, it's. In our math classes, it's in our art classes, it's in every, and PE vocabulary is everywhere, and so we're trying to really increase the usage of academic language in our school. Kind of build those skills so that our students have the words and the ability to connect them to the meaning so that they can kind of. When they take these tests, they're better fit to answer and be able to show, demonstrate their learning in a better way than we have up to this point. Goal two. Focus in this one is going to be the same as literacy, but we're kind of narrowing it down. This is based on the data that Dr. Bethman has shown you a few times. Our multilingual students are not performing as well as we'd like them to be. And so this is why literacy is so important, and we're gonna. Kind of drill down into this with the data with our staff, we're going to teach them how to use, it's called elevation, which is our ELL data program. And it shows exactly where every student is on the spectrum on the WITA assessment. So then we're giving them, we're giving them training in how to help our students develop the skills so that they can progress on the WITA assessment and become better. And demonstrate their learning. On top of not only literacy, but progressing as speakers of the second language and being able to be successful on assessments. I think I, I think I hit all those points.
All right, sorry.
And this one's a big one. Last year, our attendance for district wide, we were in the mid fifties, and I think the high school might have been a smidge under. Obviously, students don't learn if they're not in school, and so this is a huge lift for us. We chose nine absences because we were in school nine months, so one absence a month is, that's a pretty high target. We're meeting it right now. The idea is three out of four kids will attend, only miss one day a month. When we ran our data the other day. Eighty-four percent of our students were in line with the expectation, so we're really working, we're communicating. I've got the little visual board over the door, the girls will say, tell you, I've got the graph up, and so they're seeing not only how the school is doing, but how their individual classes are, and so we're. Developing program or incentive program. Where the kids that meet the attendance targets, while all their names go into the, into a bucket, and I'm working on getting partnerships in the community. So we'll select five names a month, and those kids will get rewards that we've connected with in the community, so that they're getting rewarded for being there in school. And if you don't make it this month, that's okay, because we're doing it again next month, and if you do it next month, now you're eligible. And so it's not like you're out, you know, like how the perfect attendance award, once you miss one day, it's gone for the rest of the year for you. We're into, we do it every month, and so emphasis is being there, being present, because if you're in school, you're getting a direct instruction from your teachers, and you're going to be more successful. And all these literacy things. Tools that we're providing teachers and emphasis that we're doing with our students, I will put them in a position to be more successful and be able to demonstrate their learning on a much higher level. And that's it.
One question. And I know you're new here, but wondering about like. Pre-pandemic. Where absences were in high school compared to what your goals are now?
If I remember correctly, we were about ninety-two percent, wasn't that what the overall district wide number was?
The high school was lower, district wide, yes.
We were about eighty-four.
Okay, we're trying to get back to that, and then.
Yes. Yeah, we're trying, the goal is to be back above ninety percent.
Okay.
Because that's, if you're not in school, you're not learning, and that's, that's the most important piece, and so we're really hammering that with the kids and trying to get them to understand, and. These guys are often, have to worry about them. But there's kids that, you know, when they're not there, we, we built a system when kids are gone, hey, I'm glad you're back. We tend to make sure they know, we acknowledge them. We acknowledge that they were gone, but we're glad that they're back, and what can we do to help you, and really investing in them and spending time. Making sure they have the support they need to get back on top of things academically, because. That's usually if you start to miss school, what happens is you're great, suffer, you can't, it's not just one class, you've got seven or six because of CSR. You have to one class behind, six classes behind, and so that's a challenge, and so trying to help them navigate how to keep themselves on top of those things so that they end up in those positions.
So what are the. Pushback, when you notify a family? That child has been absent more than, you know, say that one day a month. What is the, what's the pushback you're getting from the? From the family? Why are you contacting me so many times and X, Y, and Z, you know, so on and so forth?
I don't know if we really had pushback. I think it seems almost more like an appreciation that they know we're seeing it and we're paying attention. And what we're doing is we're identifying some hurdles for families, because every, every situation is unique, like before the school year, I identified, we went through and identified all the kids that missed more than. Fifteen days of school last year, which is a pretty significant number, and we noted, notated who they were. So when they came in for success conferences at the beginning of school, after their success conference, a teacher would say, oh, you have an asterisk, that means you should, you get to go talk to Mr. Theonis. And so I met with the family, you know, and I would say, okay, what's our problem? Why aren't we, what, what was our challenge last year? What can we do this year? How do we support you? And it was just, and it's just like our community, every single kid has, they're all unique, and they have different reasons, and so. It was sitting there spending time with them, hearing their concerns, and trying to help identify ways to help them be successful. And we had a good chunk of those kids. Kind of, I see them every day now, and they know who I am, so they met me before school ever started, and so I kind of got to know some kids' names before, which was kind of cool. And so I see them, and when I see them every day, I'm happy, and. I stand at the door and greet everybody in the morning, right? And so I make sure that they know that they're seen and they're heard. And I, I don't, I can't recall, I'd have to ask Ms. Brooks, but I don't really remember anybody saying calling me. I don't know that we've had pushback, people saying, don't bother me.
It could be from another, I'm not saying it was.
No, no, no.
It could be from, that, this question would go to you, two, three also. So, yeah, I see.
No, I get it.
And accountability for kids getting up, leaving classrooms each day to, you know, go to the bathroom. Were, weren't we tracking numbers like that or starting to track?
Or we just are in the process of.
Yeah, something like that.
Call pass, and we've got it, it's uploaded, it's now connected to our system, and now it's just getting. Getting the teachers and students educated on how to request a pass and.
Okay.
How all those managing for the first month, month and a half, we're just gonna let it run so we can collect data, and then we'll stop and look at everything that's there, and then we'll start making decisions based on what we're seeing. It's, it's more trying to control how many students are in the bathrooms at once than it is like a tracking thing, it's, we're trying to make sure. That we're not having too many kids in the bathroom at once, because that can lead to some behavior you don't want to see. So those, so basically the system sets up. And each bathroom has a limit of two people in it, and so it has a three-minute window, so as soon as a kid gets up to leave on a pass, the clock runs. And so if there's two kids in the bathroom while that clock is running, another kid says, I want to go to bathroom, the system says, not available, sorry. And then when it becomes available, it kick up and say, okay, bathroom is now available, now you can go to the bathroom.
Oh, cool.
Interesting, an electronic hall monitor.
Yes, sir.
I can see where people have really appreciated that twenty years ago. Do you want to have any other questions? I did have one about the dual language. The kids and the structuring. Are we, do we have something in place where they actually have the ability to receive extra help if they're having troubles to help keep them up at where they're expected to be at their grade? I don't want them to be falling back because they're having issues where they're not able to grasp what they need to know. Do we have any counselors? Do we have any support staff where they can get?
So we have forty-six ML students that are identified as multilinguals. We have an advisory period, which is third period, it's thirty-five minutes, thirty-seven of those forty-six now. Because you're identified as multilingual, some of them are further along on the spectrum, and that's why they're not in Mrs. Caredo CSR. But thirty-seven kids, which is bigger than we would normally do in a CSR, but because of the multilingual piece, we want them to be in a spot where they can get assistance. And so those kids get that, and then with the training that we're doing via. The literacy and then focusing in on our elevation with the ELL, we're giving them tools and strategy, so teachers know, most of our teachers have two or three students maybe all day long that encompass this area, and so. They know when they're teaching that class, their strategy specifically that they can implement on top of what they're doing on the literacy side. Assist those students in gaining the skills they need, does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely.
And so that's our focus, and that's why we targeted our, our ML, our multilingual students was for that exact purposes to kind of help them. Kind of, it's tough to accelerate along the WITA spectrum. But the more tools we give them, the better they're going to be able to navigate those, and we can get them hopefully a little bit quicker across that spectrum, so they can be fully functioning and not need support with Mrs. Caredo. But she'll always be their supportive no matter what.
Wonderful. It's all about the learning loss and trying to get these kids back up to the accurate grade level when they're supposed to be excelling at grade level.
Absolutely.
I get the whole board's attention. Want to, everyone wants to see that. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time, now I'm off to bed.
Thank you, Mr. Theonis. Coming back next, we'll do most of it next.
Sure.
Thanks, Mr. Moss.
All right, so our first goal is that, so before I even get started with this, so we've done pretty well overall. With our, our state testing and that sort of thing, but we've got some areas that we have really struggled in. And two of those areas as. Defined by the Washington State Instructional Framework, the WISF. Are, are students, are ELL students. And they're still using that, that's why I use that acronym. And our students with IEPs. And we're struggling compared to others in that area, so that's our focus for this year academically is. Preponderantly on, on that area, so ninety percent of our ELL students will show typical or better growth on their reading iReady scores on the spring benchmark. Of twenty twenty-four compared to fall of twenty twenty-three. And so we are, we have, all of our teachers are getting letters reading training this year, hours and hours and hours of letters reading training, they've already had, I think about. Four or so hours of it, they're getting another hour of it, a little over an hour of it this Friday. They've got another one scheduled for December, and so we are focusing on helping our students to, to understand vocabulary better. And we know that if we, if we all become better at teaching academic vocabulary, that will help all of our students. It will especially help some of our struggling students, whether that's students with IEPs, whether that's our MLL students, it'll, it'll work out great, and we are. There's an accountability piece to this too, and our accountability piece is that we're going to use our winter and spring iReady benchmarks to see, you know, is what we're doing helping. We're going to look at WITA scores, those will come in pretty late, so that's way down the road, same with SBA scores. But when we do our walkthroughs regularly, and when we do our observations, this is part of our conversation. What will I see in your class tomorrow when I'm doing my hour observation that will relate to this? And also, as we're walking through and spending ten or fifteen minutes, and we may not see that in a ten or fifteen minute walkthrough, but we're kind of looking, you know, do I see it? How often am I seeing it? So there's an accountability side of it, and also all students, especially those behind in reading, will participate in the iReady passport to progress. Now, you saw last year I had the little yellow sheet, it was the race to progress, this year it's the passport to progress, we're traveling the world, and we're doing it on a monthly basis. So students that complete ten lessons, and that could be math or reading, complete ten lessons, successfully pass ten lessons. Get a prize at the end of the month, and this year we're traveling to Mexico. Students that make their ten lessons by the end of October, get a little Mexico flag stamp on their passport, students have their little name on a passport. And then we are doing churros the first week of November as a celebration of that. Next month, we move into Canada. At the end of November, when we roll into December, we're going to be doing pancakes with maple syrup. So little reward on a monthly basis for kids that do things, and, and we're going to be traveling to. Eight other play, eight total places throughout the world and doing some different little prizes that relate to that as we move along, so just trying to change things up just a little bit, but still have some fun. And that's kind of what's happening with goal one. It's okay, goal two. During twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year, seventy-five percent of students two or more, two more, more. Grade levels, two or more grade levels below will show typical or better growth on their math iReady scores on the spring benchmark versus the fall one. Our students struggled in the fall, I'll be perfectly honest with you. And we had approximately forty-four percent, we had two hundred and twenty students that are currently listed as two or more grade levels behind based on iReady data. So we are doing a significant amount of intervention work. We have added more intervention math classes for this year. To try to help our students to catch up and to, to try to work with them on, on retaining some of those skills. And that's a, we, we've got a difficult row to hoe on that one, and we're doing some things to, to relate to that. We have our students with IEPs, we have doubled the number of classes where our students with IEPs are now in Gen Ed Math. They're getting similar math work to what other students are getting, they have an IEP teacher in there with them. Helping them to, to modify and to support them in terms of helping them to be more successful. And that's a pretty darn intensive situation, so in, in my school, we've got Sherry Smith in a class with Carrie Feigenbaum. Two periods a day instead of just one, and that's an awesome opportunity for those kids. We are looking at formative and summative assessment scores, so that might be the big test at the end of the term or the end of the unit, but it also might be the. The one quick question checkout thing that they do before they leave. And leave it in my little box as you walk out, and I'm holding the little basket, and you drop it off as you, as you leave, it only took three or four minutes. But we're taking a look, how are students getting that, and again, continuing to follow the iReady and state assessments. This is what our iReady Passport to Progress boards look like, we've actually got one for each grade level, and then the, the board on the right there is the little celebration board that's in the hallway, so. In the, the hub where all the halls meet, so. Equity, seventy percent of our students at risk in self-awareness will increase their skills through the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as measured by Dessa and write-ups. So we know that middle school kids oftentimes do some things and, and don't necessarily understand the ramifications of what they've done, or, or that's, and so we are working to try to. Improve their skills and their understanding of what we call intent versus impact. I intended this, but this is how it actually impacted people. And that's something that a lot of times eleven and twelve and thirteen-year-old kids are really working on, and so that's kind of a focus, you know, I recognize your intent. This is what the impact looks like. I think I've already kind of popped ahead there. We have, we're doubling our SEL curriculum that's being delivered this year in our enrichment classes, we did one lesson a month last year, we are doing two lessons a month. This year, those are done school-wide, so we tell teachers, you know, this has to be done in the first two days of this particular week, and that way all of our teachers know. That all of our students who were in attendance have gotten that lesson, so they can start using that kind of vocabulary, making comments that relate to that, to try to bring it back to them. And they can do that school-wide, it's not, well, my sixth graders can get one, but my seventh, no, school-wide, so. That's what we done, I think I'm at the end.
A bunch of good information. Board members, any questions?
Here's about the at-risk students. What the, roughly, you talk about seventy percent. A student approval, what's, what's the total number of students that are demonstrating?
Oh, on the SEL.
Yes, yes, self-awareness.
You know what, I don't know the total number at this point, I'm sorry, I don't have that data. Good, so I will get that for you, though.
It's a large enough number that you, you made it a goal.
It is a big, it is a big number, absolutely. More questions?
Since you've been, so to piggyback off his question right there, since you've been a principal over at the middle school for how long now?
This is eighteen for me.
Eighteen, how has that number? Changed, so it has, is. I'm assuming it's got numbers?
So I hate to, I hate to regularly use the COVID word. But what I would say is that has been the most significant dramatic change. Was if I look at pre-COVID versus now, we are dealing with a lot of issues where. Kids are not quite getting the whole social boundaries piece, and, and they're making mistakes, you know, sometimes left and right. Regarding some of the, you know, inappropriate touching, and I'm not talking about, you know, sexual kinds of things, but just a little more of a push than they would normally have done, maybe four years ago, you kind of bump into a kid. And now you're kind of moving through the hall, bouncing off a kid sometimes, and it's like, why are you doing that? I don't know. You know, and just working on that, that social cues side of it that. They lost a few years of, you know, and for my kids now, and we're getting a few years away from it. So my kids right now, at sixth through eighth, you know, they lost that in third grade, they lost that in fourth grade, they lost that in fifth grade. And so some of those things where, you know, at the elementary school, they're out playing tag, and they're out doing some of those things where you kind of learn some of those things. They didn't get to do that for a couple of years, so. I've got more kids wanting to play tag at lunch than I ever have. And that's something that, if I went back five years, kids have played tag at the middle school. It did not happen. Before pre-COVID, kids did not play tag at the middle school, kids, sixth graders, they want to play tag.
Your actions. Board members, anything else? Well, I had a question. I was looking down, I'm like, oh, wait a minute, he's leaning, oh crap.
Let's go, Neil.
My concerns are the students that are still two years behind.
Me too.
And, and, you know, the kids that are at grade level, great, you know, I know we're doing these tests, we're working on these things. Has anybody tried to figure out a good way to try to get these kids pulled back up, or suggestions of summer school? Or, you know, the individual assessment stuff? I just, I. You know, I'm, like you said, the, the kids have missed these years, and. I don't know how it is, we're supposed to hit it all back. But we need to do something, and, and. You know, are, are we engaging with the parents, they're, you know, to forty percent, is there a link between absenteeism? In class, are the parents involved? You know, I want to make sure the parents are actually, you know. They're right there, and they're learning right along with their children, because, you know, I want to make sure the parents are involved in this, it's not just, here, here, take my kid, take them to school. You know, the parent's involvement, and especially when they're two years behind. You know, I really think possibilities of summer school programs, something, something to help them keep staying, staying engaged in the summer months to help get caught back over the next year or two. So by the time they get to the point of graduation, they will actually be there and ready, I mean, there are no more. You know, we're not getting the waivers, the waivers that they gave us the last couple of years, for the state standards, and it's like, okay, these are now gone. So now all the kids are actually going to have to do the work, and, and, and that's the important part. So that's enough, that. Sorry.
I know, you don't apologize, I appreciate it, I appreciate it, and some of it, I tried to address, and I can talk about it a little bit again. Summer school, love the idea, if you can find the money for that, to fund a summer school that helps us to focus on math skills, I'm a fan, I, you know. Not twelve weeks of a kid's summer, don't do that to them, but, but definitely a piece of that would, would be great. One of, so a few of the things that we're doing, one, I think I have some really good math teachers, and if you look at our, our math SBA scores, I think that they will bear that out. Eighth grade struggled a little bit last year, but sixth and seventh grade did pretty darn well, and. It, I have confidence that my teachers will get their kids a very strong math education. it, I I have confidence that my teachers will get their kids a very strong math education this year. And I think that doubling the the access that our kids have to on-grade level curriculum with all of their Gen Ed peers, I think will help a number of our students with I E Ps who are two years behind. I think that doubling the number of the intervention math classes in the morning, so Monday through Thursday, forty minutes a day. They're getting some extra work on their math skills. And some of that is through I ready, which will focus on hitting them where they're at. So these are your holes. It's assess that. This is now your pathway to success. And so focusing on that. Motivating them with our I ready passports progress. You know, we had a hundred, well, we had well, over four hundred kids participate last year. I've got, uh, and we just started about two weeks ago. So we took a little bit of time to get it together and organized for this year. Started about two weeks ago. I've got well over a hundred kids involved in it. I've got um, twenty, I think it's about twenty kids or so that have already reached the ten. And, you know, we've still got almost a week left to go. So we're trying to find ways to help them to be motivated, to improve their skills. We're utilizing some different things. We have our regular enrichment classes have dropped down to a very low number because we are saying, you know what? You need reading help, you're getting intensive reading help. You need math help, we're doubling that. You're getting math intensive help. And because that's where we are. So that's what we're doing.
Thank you for the response.
Did I answer?
Yes, yeah, I just, you know, you're you're catching it all right now. The kids, the little ones have now grown up in the last couple of years. Where they were missing out, you know, in the elementary school. And now they're landing in in middle school. And they don't exactly know how to communicate, how to act.
Absolutely.
You know, I I mean, yeah, I I just, we gotta get these kids caught up. That's, you know.
So and 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 I can't remember now, who mentioned it earlier, but we want to also do some great work with our kids that are caught up. So we have after-school technology club. You know what? You want to get going on some serious, you know, STEM kind of stuff, there you go. We've got um, beginning today, Nano Rymo, which is the National Writers Month kind of group. And we're gonna have about thirty kids in there writing up a storm for a whole month. They're gonna spend an hour after school every day for four days a week, writing. And one or two of them might end up getting published on Amazon because we've had that happen before. Um, so we're working on, and we're not just going, well, you guys already made it, so we're not worried about you. No, we're worried about you too. We want you to get the best that you can.
Keeping them stimulated, keeping them growing. Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your time.
Can't walk away now.
I'm thinking koutin instead of uh, pancakes.
You know, I don't know if that would motivate them, though. I love that. It would motivate me. I'm in. I will take koutin over pancakes. But I'm not sure.
Canadian thing.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's like, you have to describe it. They might like, but then again, the gravy might throw them off. But koutin is definitely a Canadian thing. Thank you so much.
And Neil, I'll just add, we did have a summer opportunity for some students this summer. I've got um, pictures and video, Mrs. Lincoln and I in a dunk tank. At the end of summer, uh, it's part of a celebration for kids to achieve their goals. So we do provide those opportunities um, when they, when they are were able to do so. Um, okay, so you're gonna hear a lot of the same um, or similar, only it looks a little different per school. We have huge goals. Here are first one, again, focusing on those multilingual students. That's really a thread we're looking at. K twelve, um, so we're focusing on eighty-five percent of our students meeting their stretch goals in I ready, which is a huge stretch. Because that's not just their yearly goal, but to to cut, do some catch-up like you were asking about Neil. And so it's a, it's a lofty goal, but if we don't have lofty goals, you know, what's that saying? They say shoot for the, shoot for the stars and maybe you'll hit the moon or something like that. So um, you heard about elevation strategies or elevation from um, our high school principal, Kevin. And um, we're focusing specifically on some strategies within that system. The elevation is a website and it's loaded with data that we can see about our students. Teachers have access to it, can have access to it. Um, and there's tons of strategies in there that are a little bit like he was talking about. It has visuals and kids are drawing and they're making Venn diagrams and they're making um, different models where they break apart a vocabulary word into different pieces. So it makes it uh, very, very visual and they're manipulating uh, vocabulary and such. And so our M L teacher uses those strategies, but we're trying to highlight those. Our coach does um, has just started some Friday strategy highlights. And we do it in all different areas, but she is focusing on um, M L in particular. And then I am starting to highlight those strategies in my Warrior Weekly Newsletter. And it's really just a way of reminding teachers, hey, we have these strategies. Teachers are busy. They get, you know, they got a lot going on. And it's just, hey, remember this simple strategy. And um, then our coach, actually this Friday, Saturday, I think, is going up to um, the Washington Association of Bilingual Education. So she's going to gather a bunch of resources there to add to this that are strategies we can use with kids. And she'll be highlighting those with staff and sharing that. Um, our, our school also did a book study a while back. So we're gonna kind of resurrect that. We have new staff. Since we did that book study and it's all about teaching the critical vocabulary, the common core, that academic vocabulary. And then just yesterday at Leadership, and I do, it was suggested by our intervention specialist to highlight in my um, bulletin every week like a weekly vocab focus and just kind of share it to just be fun. Share it, highlight it, and move on. So teachers are thinking all kinds of ideas. So although this is our school-wide plan, it's gonna be continually developing throughout the year as teachers get thinking and planning. Um, and same, same reason we're focusing on it. Our state testing and our already shows that this group of kids really need our extra support. So we're accessing those strategies that can help us. Um, our second goal was the same lofty goal. We're focusing on at least eighty-five percent of our students making their stretch goal in the L A and I ready, those students with I E Ps. And I love this graphic I found because it shows five different ways to stretch. And students with I E Ps, we really have to individualize. What works for one might not work for another. And I just thought it was a nice visual representation. So again, you heard a little bit about high schools doing something like this, but we are really focusing on our case managers collaborating with classroom teachers to help pull up and design those strategies that are gonna help support students that have I E Ps. Um, our case managers are continuing to go to P L Cs the first half of our Friday time to really hear what's going on, what they're planning at each grade level and then offering their suggestions and support. Um, they have lots of tools in their toolbox to share. And then again, that letters training um, that uh, they talked about the middle school that we are doing that uh, as well at our school, trying to focus on interventions. And the next slide. Pictures worth a thousand words. So this is letters in action. So this was a classroom I visited. And they're breaking the words and the syllables, breaking apart the sounds, really focusing on those words and pronunciation, spelling, and the meanings of the words. And so it was pretty cool to see all the, that learning happening. Those are the walkthroughs like um, Will was talking about. And then the last one is focusing on attendance. So I really wish that Mrs. Lincoln's gonna be here tonight, share this. Because this is, this is her baby. And she and Lori Cordell, um, our tenant secretary. I mean, it it takes the whole village, it takes our whole school. But they are leading a lot of that work. And so our goal is that ninety percent of students will attend regularly um, and be here and on time. And so every day, you see that um, card on the right with the R. Every day, every teacher in their classroom puts that card on outside their door if ninety percent of the students are here and on time. Which means they can have about two students absent, but ninety percent of their kids are here and on time. We collect that data every day, print it out every day. Mrs. Lincoln has it on a spreadsheet, not yet, Justin. And then I make an announcement every single morning on the intercom and I tell the whole school the data. Every single day this year, we have had ninety percent or higher. Today was ninety-five. So um, we're doing a lot of things and we'll get to that in a minute. But the other thing I wanted to show, sorry, Justin, is when they hit a ten-day increment of consecutive attendance of ninety percent or better, that classroom gets a certificate that they can display. So this happens to be Mr. Olsen's class. There's many others, of course, have earned it, but it says ten days and ninety percent attendance. And then they get to display that. And when they get to twenty, they're gonna display that. And when they get to thirty, they'll display that. So they can see their progress along the way. And kids are loving it, teachers too. So, yeah.
Has there been any recaliations too harsh, but any? More about the kids um, questioning the other kids, like getting mad that they're not there because they don't get the thing on the wall or something.
Um, well, we've hit ninety percent every year, so no, that has, every day, excuse me. So it hasn't happened yet. Um, of course, we're also creating a culture of we're gonna support and encourage each other. So those teachers, if that were to happen, the plan would be that those teachers would say sometimes there are, you know, of course, there's reasons we have to ask. Sometimes we're sick. We have an appointment that has to happen on that day at that time. So, you know, we're not gonna pick on Mr. Langer for being absent today. We're gonna say when he comes back the next day. I'm so glad you're here today, Michael. We missed you yesterday. I hope you, I hope you were able to be with us tomorrow as well. So we really try to, those little teeny tiny things make a huge difference. Um, that's a great question.
How do you physically account for a kid when they come in, if they're late? You know, or not, not just late, but is it actually, you know, um, check them off on the computer, you know, hey, this is, is that how it's done? I'm just, I'm thinking about when I was in school, you know, the teachers going.
Thomas, a lot's changed since. Um, yes, it's amazing. They come in the front door, they check in. Um, of course, now we have security at our front door, so they have to be buzzed in with their parent. They come in the front door. Um, but they check in at the office, but the, so the secretary punches in that they arrived at whatever time. And there's actually a little receipt on the other side of the wall that prints out. And the kiddo takes that little receipt, so to speak. It has his name, his check-in time, and when he walks to class, he says, Mr. Black, I'm a little late. And of course, Mr. Black's gonna say,
Welcome.
So happy to see you. Glad you're here today. And that's another big darn deal we do around kids that are tardy. We, you know, we don't say, what's still, Michael, why were you late today? It's like, Michael, we were missing you. We're so glad you made it. Come on in, we'll get you caught up. You know, so that it's a big emphasis around sense of belonging and helping kids always feel welcome regardless. We'll figure out the reasons later. Teacher doesn't need to worry about that.
Yeah.
Teacher needs to teach. Kid needs to be there and part of the teaching and learning. So, great question. Thank you. So, sorry, Justin. So these are our things. Well, we had some questions I wanted to answer and I didn't get to address. So all warriors are here on time. That's a campaign we talked about. Um, trying to plans, we have scheduled family reading and math nights. And um, then I talked about that fostering, fostering a sense of belonging and culture work with the staff to really just, kids want to come to school. They want to be, they're gonna bug their parents to get there. And then we're also doing some interventions with R I S Center. So we have R I S team meetings. And if kids are on that radar of having attendance challenges, we get our R I S center connected and our assistant principal works with them to try to figure out what's going on. How can we support the family? Because of course, our kids, if they're absent, it's typically, if it's not, you know, something that's a medical thing, the the family might need some extra support. So we reach out to figure out what we can do. Okay, Justin. And, you know, again, I'm sorry about the C word, but um, we, we hopefully will get to that day. Obviously, again, the attendance has been an issue across the board. And so we had such a significant drop. That's part of the why. Kids have to be here to learn. And obviously, it's gonna help our sense of belonging, our social emotional growth, if we can do all these things to make them want to be at school. And hopefully, that's gonna help those grades down. Any other questions?
Have you had any of the problems with teachers or parents? Um, because a kid missed two days of school in a row or something like that? Has anybody complained to you about that?
To me, because Mrs. Lincoln manages attendance.
Well, you know what I'm saying.
Yes, we have had a little pushback. There was um, for the most part, parents call for clarification. And it's been a great educational opportunity for parents to really understand the law around attendance and understand the little things that are keeping kids from either just being here on time or being here. And trying to troubleshoot with them. What are some ways you can meet whatever you're taken care of and they're missing school? Maybe outside of the school time, or they had an appointment that they had to do it nine-thirty. They can still come to school, you know, eleven. It's okay if they're late. We'd rather have them late than absent. And so um, mostly when we've had phone calls, that's given us really good opportunity there. Um, we, some people may be familiar, there was a Facebook post. It was kind of negative around it. And fortunately, that parent reached out and our assistant principal had an opportunity to really talk her through all of it. And in the end, it all got resolved. So that's the one that comes to mind for me. Um, but all in all, um, most parents are pretty responsive. So, yeah. And we've had pretty good attendance, so we aren't sending out too often many letters or making too many phone calls. I don't want to talk about it. You don't have to. I covered it.
Nice, but nicely done. It's nice to get to go last because I get to say three-word things. You guys have done a remarkable job of covering the things. Appreciate that. So for our first goal, we are focusing on first graders with their um, reading assessments in, with I ready. We really want them, sixty percent of them, to hit their stretch goal growth. And all five components of reading, which would be their phonemic awareness, their phonics, their vocabulary, their reading of literature and their reading of informational text. And the stretch growth, really, it's it's, talk about what you were asking about, Neil, accelerating the students' learning without adding more time to their day or their year. It's accelerating their learning. So they're learning more than a year's amount in a year's time. So that over a period of time, they will intersect proficiency.
Using the I ready?
Yes. So that's what we're using to measure. Um, the, if you'll go ahead, Mr. Black. So letters training, we're all doing letters training. And so last year, the primary school staff had twelve hours of professional development around the science of reading. Letters training is the next thing after that. It's really beefier and based even on more science. We've already had six hours. We have another portion of time coming up next week and then another portion of time in January to continue our ongoing learning. So teachers are actually getting the psychological stuff behind really what reading means. So that whole um, old phrase, well, it's not rocket science, well, actually, teaching reading is. It really is rocket science. So they're getting more of that so they can make better use of their time with the kids. The whole idea of being more engaging and really knowing what to tweak in what you're doing to really meet the kids' needs. Let's not spend time doing things that aren't going to move us forward. We don't need kids working harder. We need them working on the right things. We don't need teachers working harder. We need to work on the right things. So that is our focus on overall for grades one and two, reading, letters trainings are big to da. Are really making all these connections. And I think Will referenced walkthroughs and maybe Kelly did as well. So the things that Danny and I are gonna be looking for when we're observing classes has to do with, oh, yes, that's a letters thing. Ooh. That's a science reading thing so that we can talk to our teachers about it in their pre or their post-observation conversations to keep that whole accountability piece and to help us keep it live too. Please. So our second goal is specific to our kids who qualify for multilingual services, our E L L kids, if that's the phrase you wanna you're more familiar with. And we're gonna focus on our first and second grade kiddos that um, that they're not yet proficient in speaking as measured by the W I D A. Now, it is a, the W I D A standards are much more stringent than standards we've had before. So in previous iterations of the English language um, proficiency test, it would have a kid exit out of M L services at the failure level in hopes that lap or title would pick him up. Well, now, over the last fifteen years, they've actually picked it up. So you do not leave support program until you are truly English dominant, peer, parallel, ready and proficient. So you do not escape until you're good to go. But it is pretty arduous. But it is pretty arduous and it can be daunting for kids to be in program that wrong. Specific also to this about the speaking test, the speaking test is not easy, and it's a one-on-one assessment. And the kids actually have to speak in full sentences and use academic language. So while this goal is specific to our ML students, all of the kids are academic language learners. We're teaching phrases like, I respectfully disagree, and then the kid tells why, said it's, you're wrong or stupid. We're giving them, it also is a social emotional thing too, to be able to disagree with somebody and not have it become a relationship-breaking experience. Or we're also able to have kids paraphrase, we're giving them all the tools to not only enhance their learning. Show what they know and really engage in what they're doing, but to give them, please, Mr. Black. To give them some of those actual job skills. So the PD that we have, we have at least seven hours already scheduled, I don't think I can squeeze in anymore. Um, with our certificated teachers, and we're doing things like shaping content into comprehensible input. One of our lessons, I think it was a week ago Wednesday. Candace Robinson, who is our ML teacher, who is also the instructional teacher leader for all of our ML instructors in the district. She gave us a lesson, it was videotaped from some experience that she had, and the language they used was Serbian. And the teacher taught, it was a real brief little lesson, and it was strictly in Serbian without using any sort of ML techniques. Like some of the ones that, um, you've referenced, and I think you've referenced, and Kevin referenced from elevations. And then she had the lesson with the strategies, and we all knew what we were doing, and we could participate. We didn't even need to know the vocabulary to be able to understand what we were doing. There was one teacher, we do have one teacher whose husband is, his family is from Serbia, and they do speak Serbian, but she struggled a little bit too with the first lesson. But you, if you can teach the ideas and the concepts and not have it be language-based, then everybody in the room is able to engage and participate. We're gonna work with, you know, some very specific models, that structured student talk, that's something we did pre-pandemic, I didn't use the C word. Pre-pandemic, we were really big into that, we're bringing it back, we're resurrecting it. We also have had probably a third of the staff, of the teaching staff change since we had our focus on structured student talk. So it'll be validating for the staff that have been there, and it'll be, oh, I can do that. For our staff that are newer to us, reinforce the value of oral language practice. We really do have to have the kids practice speaking. When I go to observe Candace, who's our ML teacher, and the kids working in her classroom. They are standing out, they're big, loud and proud, they're doing their thing. And then I observe them in their, you know, dispersed in their general education classes. And they're withdrawn, and they're quiet, and they're less engaged, they don't feel as empowered. So if we can get all of our students to be academic language learners, then everybody's on an evil playing field. And we'll get more participation from our kids that need more language practice. Um, we've got total physical response accountability partners, so we've all been at trainings where you sit and you get and you forget. So there's built in with the things that Candace has got planned for us, the responsibility, like if you were my co-teacher, or I choose, like you and I always eat lunch together. Then I'm gonna check in with you and you're gonna check in with me to see if I tried that new strategy and how did it go? So there's some accountability to this as well. Uh, we are gonna use, in iReady, there is a vocabulary subset, like I mentioned before, with the overall. ELA rating for kiddos, vocabulary is one of the pieces, so we can use that as one of our benchmarks as the year goes on. And then we'll have our subset of speaking from WIDA for students who qualify for ML, we'll get tested. So then, oh yeah, our Y, those things, I think I covered them. Thanks. Um, so for the equity or social emotional learning goal for the primary school. This one is more focused on teachers proficiency. To respond to tier-two cadavers for students, and I wanna see a thirty percent increase in teacher's sense of confidence in meeting. Tier-two student needs, so you've got tier-one, please, sir. So you've got your tier-one, which is what everybody gets. And tier-two, some kids are, everyone's getting tier-one, some kids are gonna need tier-two, and then some kids are gonna need tier-three. We're not worried about three for this whole group, for all of our teachers. Um, some of the things that we've done, I wanna not talk about the first bullet, but I wanna talk about the second bullet. Uh, it is now part of our core instruction. Every single day, Monday through Friday, thirty minutes are spent on social emotional learning. And it needs to be in the first thirty minutes of the day, it's that important. If you don't feel like you belong, if you don't know how to manage yourself and have to be removed, you're not gonna be learning anything. We need a super strong tier-one so kids can learn to self-regulate. So I can know how to go to a group of friends at recess and ask to play with them in a kind way. And I can accept it when they say, no, I can't play with them, that is devastating. So I need to know how to ask, and you don't know how to accept whatever I'm told. So every kid is getting this across the board, thirty minutes a day. We've also implemented morning meetings, and they need to be in a circle, because the circle's super important. And teachers have been like, okay, this is some heavy lift, because they, with the exception of three of them, have not done that before. We provided that training in August and those were four student days. And we also have closing circles, that's one's not really, we're not really nailing that one, but we're gonna get there. Um, the next item that is super important has to do with the, um, I may not have put it, yep, I did, the pacing. Our, um, counselor, Sarah Gerberkai, spent a good portion of August organizing the lessons. We're using the second-step curriculum materials that have been approved for and purchased by the district. She has organized them, so there's a Monday through Friday lesson, there's one new lesson every week. There are four follow-up lessons, they might be stories, because kids learn best through story. They might be songs, they might be games, she has organized it for every single week, for every single grade level, so all I have to do is the teacher, Tuesday. Know what I'm doing, and it's all right there, ready to go, she's prepared all of the materials. Because this is something we've not had teachers do to this intensity before, we're trying to make it as user-friendly as possible. Back to the first bullet. So everyone's getting our tier-one lessons, teachers correct kids, teachers support kids, we teach them all about. Rootings and procedures in class, but then you have a friend, that's what we call our friends, our students, and I have a friend who needs more. They're becoming, we, we teach kids about the part of your brain, which is your feeling part of your brain. Your survival part of your brain versus your frontal, prefrontal cortex, which covers that, or your thinking part. So if you're in a good learning spot, part of your brain's working just fine, feeling pretty good, doing anything, okay, wait, and now I'm starting to get frustrated. So you start this business, saying, oh, I'm getting the yellow zone, mm, and then you flip your lid, and there's no talking to you. And you just need to get your act together, we teach the kids all the proper words for this, and we've got kids who'll start showing you, because maybe I am becoming so upset, I can't talk to you. But you show me this, and I can tell you, baby, what to do, I can guide you to what you need to do, we have a. Um, regulation station in every classroom, so maybe I just need to go over there into that soft spot and pull the blanket over my head. Fine, then you do that, maybe I need a breathing pattern, those are all posted in the spaces. Your teachers are teaching about the breathing patterns and all of these things. Well, maybe you've got a friend who needs more than that even, we need our gen ed teachers to be able to meet these kids' needs. So that I don't have to go and take you someplace and do this with you. Because the moment I take you away, that's changed your place in the class, and you're not hearing anything. As an example, today, we have changed some of the words that we're using. Uh, teachers can call for a walk and talk, I have got a kid that needs to get up and go. Just do a couple loops, maybe shoot a couple baskets, get you back, because you've regulated, you, you can manage. But today, I got a walk and talk, and that's not what the teacher wants, surely wanted to flip-flop, she forgot the words. So I get to the classroom and teacher says to me, I have a student that I need to talk to, I have very much upset him. By not allowing X, Y, and Z to happen. Could you take my class so I can talk to the kid? You betcha, so I got to teach, uh, first grade, uh, domain lesson today. Teacher took the kids, they went and did their thing, I almost got to the end of the lesson, and we were having a great time. They worked out their stuff, life is good, back in. That relationship, that kid being able to regulate with their teacher is far more important than regulating with anybody else in that building. Anybody else. And so that's the kind of thing that we needed, that all staff will read regulation and co-regulation, accessible neuroscience and connection strategies that. Bring calm to the classroom, really quick title, we need all of our staff to know how to do that. Because you know how, like, when you had small baby people in your lives. That they would start to get upset and crying, and you know you just hold them, and they would pick up your heartbeat, your calmness. That's what the same kids do, whether they're, you know, this size or this size. And we're teaching our teachers how to co-regulate, because a teacher can calm a whole class. So that's why we needed everybody to know how to do that, and no, we don't hold them, they're too big for that, and that's weird. And the ways that we're going, oh, oh, the fourth, um, bullet has to do with. The Safe and Civil Schools Champs Program, we began that pre-pandemic, didn't use the C word again. And we're bringing it back, so our instructional coach, Diane Fast. She's been working with the other instructional coaches and Maggie and providing champs training outside of the workday, and sometimes during the summer to staff. Um, that, that was, that was optional, well, now it's not optional, so all of our, our teachers are having this opportunity. So that we can have more consistency in classroom procedures for basic things, so kids don't have to figure that out year to year, room to room. And then we're gonna use our DESA results and discipline referrals by type at the location listed as classroom. Attendance and a Likert scale for teachers three times a year to see what kind of progress we're making. And the big old Y on the SEL. Well, most of our kids, their needs have shifted since the pandemic, and we need to shift to meet those needs, teachers are teaching great. Kids' needs are here, they're not matching, they're passing, passing each other in the night. Um, so WaKids is one of those early learning assessments, we get a baseline of what the kids are able to do, what assets they're bringing. To us as kindergartners. And there is a separate section just for SEL, it's things like, how well do you regulate yourself? How, 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 how well can you tolerate me and tell, no, you don't get to play with us? Um, are you into parallel play, or do you play together with people? Can you follow one, two, or three-step directions? Can you wait? Um, all of those things are super important, if you're gonna have twenty kindergartners in a classroom and ask them to do something. So this has to show what our kids were coming into us with. So, in the fifteen, sixteen school year, I have a line graph in case that you're learning style, and I also have a chart with just numbers. In the fifteen, sixteen school year, nearly seventy-three percent of our kids were coming in behaving like. Five-year-old people with their social emotional skills, they could wait, they could handle, no. So in a class of twenty kids. You're gonna have fourteen of them that are doing what you expect, and maybe have six kids that need a little bit more. So we're seventy-three, we're sixty-nine, seventy-nine, woo, eighty-three, hot dog, then we're seventies, and then. The year that we got to come back onto campus, sixty percent of our kids, okay, we're rounding up to sixty-one. We're coming in ready to learn, so that means you've got twelve kids out of twenty. Who can do the things as far as engaging and interacting with other people. And then last year, we had forty-nine point seven, let's call that fifty. So half the kids coming in your classroom can regulate. And the other half are behaving like three and four-year-olds. And you've all been to that family reunion. Where there's six or seven little ones running around, and it's all good until somebody trips on something, and then it becomes very unmanageable. Same thing is happening in classrooms, that's why we're focusing this much on SEL. We need to have the tier-one totally solidified, and our teachers better able, more confident. More confident that they can manage the little uptick when a kid starts doing this. Questions?
Questions, more members? The way that you displayed that, talked about that. Want to say this WaKids select data, we're at twenty-two, twenty-three, we're at forty-nine point seven, I would say that's almost fifty.
Yeah, I'm about to fifty.
When do our, our next testing come out for that? Are we gonna have another test for that?
Yeah, so the current children that we've just received, the teachers are collecting the data, the data is due November fifteenth.
I would love to see that data, it's like.
You betcha.
It keeps going down, obviously, we're not doing something correctly.
Well, let's back it up, this is how the children are coming.
Coming to school.
So, so when we talk about, so we talk about early learning groups, so we have. A strong Head Start presence in Rochester and out at the Shenley, let's drive, they've got an even bigger Head Start program than we do. On Kelly's campus. And we have, um, Roots has both E-CAP preschool and daycare. And then we have our, um, Rochester Early Intervention Preschool for students with special education as early as age three. Some four-year-olds, and we have two sections of Transitional Kindergarten, which is essentially four-year-old preschool. And in that class, you'll have students with autism, regular old four-year-olds that are typically developing. There's, um, not very many, there are not very many spaces available for a preschool experience in the Rochester area. So if I have a hundred and fifty-two kindergartners today. Our Head Start maybe has forty. We are hitting, right now, we've got thirty-one or thirty-two in our. Transitional kindergarten, and I thought Roots had about thirteen. That doesn't equal one hundred fifty, we don't have enough opportunities for children to come together and to learn to play with one another. And like everyone else's experience during the pandemic, parents were at home, like they were lucky to work from home. Maybe I need to get this Zoom meeting done, here's the iPad, watch this show, so they weren't getting the back and forth, parents were doing what they had to do. No judgment, but we're seeing the results. And we've got kids that didn't get to go to nursery time at the Sunday school, we've got kids who didn't get to go to the family parties. And they didn't get to go hang out with Uncle so-and-so or Grandma whatever, so they have, they had a much smaller social world. And it shows in their speech, we have the lots of people. We have lots of children. Who have what would typically look like delayed speech, they're not delayed. It's not like they need an IEP, there's nothing organically wrong, it's just they haven't had experience. So what our kindergarten teachers are working with right now are preschoolers.
Thank you for the explanation, I was looking at the chart, I was like. Like, are we doing something that's not right to make things better, but we'll get another update here soon.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, yeah, it's, yeah.
So it's our greater community, our greater community, um, early learning opportunities, that's what we need to be fun.
Sounds like we're trying to do a really good job, trying to. Children to self-regulate.
Yes.
You know, and, and working together, and, yeah, the isolationism. All they know is they're brothers and sisters and beating up on each other for the heck of it, to, they bring those skills to the schools.
Yes, and we're like, sweetheart, those are home rules, we're gonna use these rules. Because we're never gonna disparage what happens at a person's home, if that works for you at home, but at school, we're gonna do this.
Like I said, we're playing tag. You know, it's just, you know, that, that, that emotional.
But you get going, you get going, you get excited and stop.
Yeah, well, thank you so much, uh, any other questions?
The lack of capacity for preschool. Do you have a sense of whether there's a demand, like, are there waiting lists?
There's waiting lists.
Okay, so people want it, it's just not here.
Correct.
And the folks who just don't want.
Yeah, yeah, and then there's also the impact of, maybe I have my home in Rochester, but I work in Tumwater, so I've got a wee one. I'm gonna maybe choose a preschool or a daycare center close to where my, where my work is, rather than being away from my small child locker. So that's also an impact there, but no, the, we have, um. When we do our kindergarten roundup, and we're gathering all the data on the kiddos, we keep track of who's had an, an early learning experience. And we've got plenty of children who've not had that chance yet. Yes, Mr. Truck, come on.
So, so I feel, let's sit here and listen to you talk the whole time. And you have, you were talking about how you set the kids down and they had to. Speak correctly.
Yes.
All time. So in what part of schooling does the word, uh, mm, uh, start coming in at? Because as adults. We can barely, with the exception of you, we can barely. Complete a sentence without going, um. I'm giving you a compliment, because you sat there the whole night, and.
I appreciate that.
I was thinking, when you said that you, you sat there and. You test these children at, you know, they have to speak correctly, and I'm, just the first thing that came to mind is. At what grade level does the English language?
Introduce, uh.
Yeah, you introduce, uh, buh.
Well, part of that, no, we have data on that.
A lot of data, I'm not sure we collect the data on that.
But I, I was, I was taking in what you were saying. Listen to how, how you were speaking. And then that just, for whatever reason, that popped in, because I listened to people. And then that just, for whatever reason, that popped in because I listen to people speak all the time and that's all you hear is um, uh.
So for some people, it's because they're not confident about what they're gonna talk about. Some people aren't really interested in what they're talking about or what you asked to talk about. I'm big, loud and proud. I know my stuff and I'm good to tell you. With that being said, you know, and there's also, there's also shyness and and discomfort. If you were to ask me to talk about some things that I'm not that versed on, I know how to play basketball. I know how to play three kinds of basketball, pickup games, high school games. I know the rules for the NBA or the WNBA, but you start really getting into the system like I gotta tie my shoes now. I don't, I don't have the confidence in those things. And because and it, somebody was talking earlier and you'd asked about some of the attendance and some of the pushback. That couple of instances of pushback that we've had about attendance that's different than before. We we're the first time that people have been beholden to somebody regarding where their children child has been. My child was absent yesterday. Yes, and can you please tell us why? Why do I have to tell you? That's not new. That's just an experience that we have at the primary school. But what has been interesting, if we've had a couple of instances where families wanted to drop their kid off and then drive away after the day has begun. And so there, we can't see them, they're short. So we don't know there's a kid at the door. And they don't know during the doorbell because they can't read yet. So we've had a couple of those instances and then pretty soon you'll see a little head come over. Knock, knock, knock in the window. Sweet baby, let's get you in. And then we'll call the family and say, we need you to bring your child in and show your ID and let us know where they were. So we've had a couple of people who their day was rotten. They were running late. Say, can you help me with your baby outside? Thank goodness the children are tenacious until they got some attention. And now I really am down good dance way.
Thomas, I was just thinking with that uh uh on, that comes from sticking the iPad in front of a kid's face and they're watching YouTube videos. Struck me that way.
Neil, I'd just like to say that uh these school improvement plans really are very intentional plans around the work that they're really focusing on the buildings. And principals have put a lot of thought into them. They've done needs, bestness to determine whether work need to be done. They did it with their staff and their staff understand the work that's being, the focus of the, so. Um, they will be changing it and make modifications along way as needed because that's what a live plan looks like, but that's what this is about. It's not just about a hoop we're jumping through. And you're gonna be approving their plans later in the meeting, but it it's about making sure that they were really intentional about the work that needs to be done to move our kids forward academically.
Absolutely. I agree. Thank you for the presentations. Absolutely. All right, any other feedback?
Um, I would like to go ahead and say that like what all you guys are doing is absolutely wonderful. And it is something that we noticed, I think, in high school as well, like after the pandemic. That like sometimes like social skills, they do fall behind. Um, I think too with like how we're having the club days that it is uh helping with our social skills. I think it's important to like relay to students that you guys aren't necessar- it's not necessarily a punishment, which is I think a lot of students do view as that way. But it's coming from all levels of sincerity to go ahead and and like prosper like for our students and to go ahead and make sure that they have a better future.
See, she didn't say uh. All right. Well, this time it looks like we're moving on to Sue and you's report. Ed?
Okay, I'm gonna be short and sweet here. We'll um talk about the water system first. As of right now, the water system has been working with minimal challenges for twenty-two days, seven hours or forty-three minutes. Know that very intimately. We had uh the reservoir pumps are now controlled manually by a float system. That's what you're seeing in these pictures here. It it's kind of a very simple, barbaric kind of a way to do it, but it it works and it it works in many systems. We bypassed all the PLC level controls of the reservoir just because they're so old and outdated and you can't get components. And so we've got this manual flow system. It has a audible alarm on it. You see in the box there. It's also gonna have a flashing light. What that'll do for our district is when Mr. Theonis is leaving the high school at seven o'clock at night because of an activity or anybody, they see that flashing light, they can pick up the phone and call me and say, hey, there's a problem where they, you know, they may or may not hear the audible alarm depending on what's going on, but they'll be able to see the flashing light. Anybody can. So yeah, Mrs. Remberger can see it at her school or something. So that tells us that one that's full or it's at a level that we need to come in and get attention before we drain the reservoir and have to go through a whole process. So we haven't. So that's that's a big, big step in the right direction there. Um, of course, last month we also changed the well, the new pump on the wellhead number one. Um, that all went as planned, so that's all working as it should. The system is maintaining sixty-five to seventy PSI as it was originally designed, which is fantastic because it hasn't been that for many years. Um, the downside of that is, is now that we're finding all these smaller fractures in the system because it's so old. We just had one, we fixed Monday, Tuesday at the high school, a three-inch main line that now that it's, now that it's not at thirty-five to forty-five PSI, it's at sixty-five, seventy PSI. It's boring those holes and those leaks are coming to surface. We're we're able to see that. It's just a a challenge. It's not nothing we can overcome. It's just a challenge finding these things all the time and getting on top of them. Yeah, the system that down in that that reservoir, it operates so much more quiet now. It's incredible compared to what it was, so. Fire suppression system at RHS Stadium. Um, these are some pictures of, we had a leak that came out on the night of a soccer game and uh the night before a big football game. Um, that's a Band-Aid fix there with whatever we could do to get it to fix. It it the patch lasted Thursday night and then it bored the big hole by Friday. So we had to patch it with metal plates and washers and grommets and whatever we could do. And we just got all that piping replaced. The pipe's just so thin that as the high pressure kept pushing through it, it just made the hole bigger and bigger. It's just, it's just a challenge that we've had through the the high school for the last fifteen years that I know of, so.
Ed, question, can we regulate the pressure on that and bring it back down closer to forty?
This is a separate system. This, this is the uh this is a seventy PSI system as well, but this is for the fire suppression. So this is the dry system. So how this works is if that leak was to go on and we didn't patch that and plug that and restrict that, all that air pressure goes off and sets off the fire alarm. Yeah.
Okay, so this is
This is, this is fires, these are sprinkler systems that are in places of the building that is not heated and regulated. So all the overhangs around the building, the stadium, all that kind of stuff. So it's air because of this water, it freezes. So it's air. And so then if that air pressure drops, there's a pressure that runs, that air pressure, that compressor can't give up with it, which clearly you can see that hole is almost the size of your little finger. Um, then the fire system, the fire alarm will go off, our system can go off, sprinklers can go off. So.
And that means we get called to the school multiple times during the day.
And no kids in class, you know, I mean, so it's a huge challenge and and we we hit these things uh hot and heavy as soon as we get them, but it's just, you know, you you wait for parts and components and people to get up there to do it, so.
We have a lot of these pipes ran through the whole stadium and
I probably, since I've been here in the five years I've been here, I probably replaced six hundred feet of them, three, five, six hundred feet of them. I know the previous director prepared, replaced several himself, so.
Yeah.
And that, the way that the high school is built, the mezzanine is not really accessible for staying on top of these things, you know, I mean, you don't know until you we find leaks in ceiling tiles, it could be pipes or it could be a leak in the ceiling. You don't know what it is because we don't have an accessible mezzanine like the other schools. Any other questions on that? Um, RS gates, I'll touch on those real quick. We, both of the gates that we've installed at the high school, the can lever gate by the mini shop and the double swing gate at the going towards the back of the high school are both mechanically working. We're just waiting for some components for the can lever gate. Some of the two, the components are defective. They're not talking to each other. Um, and then once we get that, then the guys will come in and program them so that we can program the cards, the codes to however we decide to have them work. Um, the gate going to the back of the high school will work individually. An in gate and an out gate, you know, so we don't have people driving by. The can lever gate is obviously just works one way, just can levers and opens and and there'll be signings that comes with those as well, you know, explaining to people how to use them and don't go through it and because they're sent to go through it and when it's half open, you'll trip the center and it'll stop. It'll stay half open, you know, so yeah, wait till it's all way open and et cetera. That will come, it's it's taking way longer than we wanted to, but it's just one of the challenges of that. Grounds and fields, the uh the top left and the bottom left are the practice football field that everybody's been using. Um, we've been, we got it green during the summer, but it was completely dead with all the water system challenges we had because we couldn't irrigate it. But when they have to practice on it, it's just a mud pile. So it's just the way that it is. The far right is the game field. Um, you can see how that is, it's just completely fertilized and we're reseeding to try to get it as hardy as we can for the fall with no use just to get it up so that we can get a good jump started in the spring. But if we don't get something back, it's just gonna be, it'll be that mud and weeds in the spring, you know, so unfortunately weeds grow in the winter and grass doesn't, but you know. Um, the pictures in the middle are the um cross-country track that we're getting put into place and we hope it'll uh be the school, high school's walking class track. They could walk that within the gates instead of walking outside the lock gates. Um, the generosity of Dan at Lails um donated a fifty-three footer of all that um subbase for track. So that's a, that was a huge deal. And then the cross-country, Mr. Uh Dale Crockett in um his cross-country crew are, as they get time, they go out and help spread it around. We try to put it in piles when we get it, you know, twenty minutes here and there and then go around and spread it out. So that'll be a nice asset at the at the schools for for all the schools to use. I mean, you could, I seen littles going out on the the carpet trail the other day. I mean, they could go on that once it's, you know, something that they could pass. Um, the last pictures would be, I don't think they're really good. There's a couple, if you go into high school, you'll see some construction of a, some concrete board. That's a scout project that's going on. Nothing that we're doing. It's um the new student parking sign. So if somebody sees that and they wonder, what is that? That's, you know, that's what they're working on. Just replacing the old, many years old theme sign that we're failing. Any questions?
Any questions, board members? Thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Um, went out and walked the football field about three weeks ago and walked out in the middle of their halftime with, it still looks pretty dang good.
Yeah, and and I have one grounds person right now. We're we're short. You know, I thought that my players are gone and one of them just announced that he's retiring at the end of December, so um, it's a huge challenge, so.
Glad to see we got our mechanical float put in place there, so.
Huge deal.
Yeah, that's, that's like, I kept hearing these reports, it's run dry. I'm like, why don't we go and get one of these things? And it's like, it's what you got. It's exactly what I was expecting it to look like. So thank you, sir. All right. Next on our agenda is going to be business reports.
Tonight I have enrollment reports for you. Um, in October, we grew a little bit. Um, so going in the right direction, we're about fifty-two students or uh student FTE over budget. We had our first running start count. Um, there are eighty-nine students participating in running start and thirty-two of those students are running start only. Um, heart grew a little bit as well to thirty-one point two FTE. Our sped count remained pretty stable at three thirty-three and we were able to capture four students for the dropout re-engagement program for gravity. So uh on the screen, the big red arrow points to our current year um enrollment trend history. So again, moving in the right direction, we started in a higher spot than we have for the past two years, so that's a good sign.
Excellent. And what is our accurate, what is our current number?
Our FTE is two thousand thirty-nine.
Two thousand thirty-nine?
Yep, and that's a head count of two thousand one hundred and six.
Okay. Actually. Anybody have any questions? Any board members there?
Our high school numbers, um, they were pretty high last year too. I think it's the trend of around thirty. Seems to be.
This is definitely the highest number we've started out with. And I actually spoke to Kevin Wilson last week about it. And he said something that worked well is um all the kids he had come in during success conferences. So he was able to touch basis with every kid who had enrolled. Whereas in the past, there'd be kids enrolled, but he wouldn't be able to catch up with them until October or November. Um, so he wouldn't be able to count them right away. Like he was able to bring them all in before school started and get all the paperwork signed.
I don't remember seeing the ninth and tenth graders in the past, is it?
Ninth graders are are pretty normal. And some of those ninth graders might have gone to Hart last year. They just haven't earned enough credits to be a tenth grader. Um, because they are on a case-by-case basis, but I'm guessing some of them might have been a ninth grader at Hart last year. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Next up would be our superintendent's report.
All right, so just a few things to share tonight. And I won't spend a lot of time on this because you've heard a lot about this already. Our principals tonight, but the literacy training continues. Um, all of our teachers had six hours in August. And then our PS and GMS had a, will have an additional career rehearsed. And our middle school um is really moving fast. They want the teachers to have this information right away. They're getting a different set of information and they're, they will have completed an additional six hours by winter break. Um, the the RPS and GMS will continue to work on letters training afterwards. Um, and the high school is also training in the literacy. We also are doing um UDL modules with all of our staff so that they're working on inclusionary practices. Staff had two hours um of training around UDL and inclusionary practices in August or September. And they'll have three more uh professional learning sessions in that area to support inclusionary practices and working to meet all of our kids' needs when they're in the general like classrooms. Next, um you also heard, I think it was Kendra and maybe Grace stacked this one up, a little bit about our college um application of financial aid night. It was a well-attended evening. There were over seventy families who attended. Um, there was long lines in the entry area to sign in and to get what they needed to move on. The, everybody in attendance went to three different sessions. One talked about uh the application process. Another was about FAFSA, which isn't opening up until December this year. So it was early information for our kids and our families. And then there was scholarship information, but and then there was also tables in the um cafeteria to, for kids to speak specifically to some of the colleges that were there. There was military institutions there, so different places to add, to get questions answered for the kids. Uh, I heard in the uh library, um uh, one of our uh representatives, I think it was from the Coast Guard. I'm not sure where, one of the military, National Guard, okay. And he was talking to the kids about the ASVAB. And how important it is to take the ASVAB even if you don't want to go in the military because of the information it does share about you as a learner and what might be a good fit for you moving forward. So the kids were exposed to a lot of different uh thoughts about what post-secondary education can look like. It's a really good night for those families who attended. And then conferences, we just had conference week last week. RPS and GMS. Ninety percent and higher, ninety-eight percent at RPS, I think. TK kindergarten that had a hundred percent, yep. So really strong attendance with our younger grades. The middle school, eighty-two percent attendance, again, very good attendance. Obviously, we'd love to see the rest of our kids and families attend there, but good attendance at the high school, our ninth and tenth grade attended it at about seven, seventy percent and our eleventh and twelfth grade families attended at about thirty-eight percent. So we have work to do at our high schools to continue to increase the attendance at those levels and make sure that they're coming. And I think that means we need to look at what we're doing at our conferences to make sure they're valuable for families and that they want to come in and get that information. October is principal recognition month, so I just want to make sure we're recognizing our principals. They really, their their heart and soul is making sure that they're taking care of our kids. That's what they're they're about. Um, they truly come in and you heard tonight, they're instructional leaders. They believe in their kids, they believe in their staff. They're, they're professionals. I mean, you you talk about being a professional. They are standing up tall and and answering all the questions that are thrown at them in a million different directions from the time they walk in the door until they leave at night. And that leads into them being tired. And that leads into them being tireless, having a growth mindset, being creative and innovated, innovative. But just gotta tell you, they, they're working hard and they have probably are experiencing some of the greatest challenges. That they've ever seen, and we have thought, you know, maybe the last four years, three years, two years, we were seeing a lot of challenges, but. We just keep getting more and more challenges, our kids are coming and needing more. Supports, different supports, um, their behaviors look different than they've looked in the past, and. Um, we have a lot of really tough kids that we're working with now. They did a great job tonight, really talking about how they're gonna take care of all those kids, but we've had. We had a principal that was struck in the face, we've had kids in rooms that were kicking, kicking doors and, and screaming and yelling. We've had young kids in our primary school that are just not. This school and they're running around and they're fighting and they're screaming and yelling, so. It, and it's our principals and our sister principals who are taking care of those kids and really supporting our staff. In helping them, helping the kids learn how to be successful at school, so I think we really need to recognize them and thank them for all their work. We couldn't do it without it, and our kids couldn't do it without them, and our staff couldn't do it without them, they are amazing people, so. Want to just take a minute to thank them. And then finally, just some upcoming events. Next board meeting is November eighth, WASTA Conference is the sixteenth through the eighteenth. On November twenty-first, twenty-first, we have a legislative tour of our buildings, Representative, Representative Quator is gonna be in the district. And he will be visiting definitely the high school and one other building. Uh, we'll be working to make sure he sees what he needs to see. I've been in contact with him and he's a huge advocate for ensuring that. Districts have what they need to, you know, build buildings and um. Support our kids, especially our special needs kids in our building, so I'm glad to see him coming out, it's gonna be a nice to walk around and be able to show him. What our district is about right now, and then on the thirteenth of December is our next board meeting, last one for the, for the calendar year. That's all I have in my.
Uh, Dr. Beth, right there. Those going to, are, are the next two months, uh, board me, uh, board meetings going to be the early meeting of the month?
Yes, they are both in the early.
Okay.
Yes, good catch.
Yeah, well, it's important for me.
Yes.
Otherwise I'd be waiting for the fourth Wednesday.
Any uh, questions, board members, about anything the superintendent informed us, uh? Only question I have is why do we, we only have thirty-eight percent attendance, oh, it's not gonna be, it would be eleven to twelfth graders. Everything I found odd.
Yep, and that's something we're gonna be working on.
Okay, is there something else going on in time or it seems familiar? Okay, um, at this point in time, let's see, uh. Uh, well, I'm thinking, uh, we could make a five-minute break, we've been here for a little over an hour and a half now. So uh, I'm thinking we should have a recess for five minutes and we'll clock back in at eight oh eight. And uh, yeah, take a break, oh, and release all the people that need to go. Uh, thank you for coming and sharing, um, you guys don't need to stay any longer, um, except for you, unless you're here for. The rest of the, the public, the new business ahead, but at this point in time, everyone is released to go, um. I'd like to recognize Dan Fisher with the uh, Sun Times for being here and putting it out in the public. So people know what's going on in our community.
Rochester Sun News.
Rochester Sun News, thank you.
It kind of goes to Sun Times, and they call it that because sometimes, you know, sometimes.
Ah, well, if you're gonna put that, apologies, I do know I get it at Fly House, all right. Quick break, everybody. We are back at eight eleven, and at this point in time, we're going to move on to our new business, uh, RSD Monetary Donation from Briggs Nursery.
Yep, and that's a donation of two thousand dollars um, to the agriculture ag program.
Very nice, yes, wonderful, so will you be sending them a card?
Yes, we will, I'll make sure we have it for the next meeting.
Okay, that's right, I also have a check in my possession for a thousand dollars for help chuck glass. For our, uh, our robotics team.
So we'll get that in the next meeting too.
Yes, yes, um, they finally, because they put, they, by the time they were putting out a GoFundMe page. We'd already closed it down, but they'd already started to collect some money and the stuff had been sitting there, and so they finally had it released. And so they cut me a check, uh, they've matched, so it became a thousand dollars, yeah, the, the company also matched.
Over your.
Where I'm over.
Yeah, that's my employer.
That's a very nice. Yeah, I was rather surprised, I was like, oh, cool, totally slipped my mind, so, uh, right, uh. The next thing on our business, number B, uh, surplus.
Oh, yes, you did a motion.
Oh, we need a motion to uh, approve the money donation from Briggs Nursery.
So moved.
Second, all right, one a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, all right, motion passes. All right, next, surplus textbooks.
These are the old high school, uh, English Language Arts textbooks that are twelve hundred pages long, long in length. Um, nobody wants these, so, um, you guys did approve, uh, ELA. What, what's that?
Because of the length.
Well, they, they're really good paperweights and no one wants them in their backpacks either, so they're like fourteen pounds, so. Um, which we never checked them out to kids, we kept in the classrooms anyway, we'd never put that book in a backpack. Um, but uh, you guys approved, uh, new materials last, uh, last year for moving forward, this is from the previous adoption. So these books are like nine or ten years old, so they're ready to go.
All right, so, do you make a motion for this?
Yes.
All right, so, make, make a motion to uh, get rid of our surplus textbooks.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, uh, right, uh, most of the proof, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, next we're on to resolution, EPO levy.
This is our EPNO levy that would be on the ballot for February thirteenth, May twenty-four, it is. Written so that it would be at the cost of two dollars and fifty cents per thousand for four years.
That's basically a carryforward of our existing.
Correct, it's a renewal.
Yeah, and do we have anything still outstanding on the, on the previous one?
No, but when, when we start to pay this one, the old one, we will be done with that four-year payment of the last levy.
Wonderful, all right, well, at this point in time.
Oh, is it question time or not, sorry?
Oh, I was gonna say, uh, yeah, is, is anybody like to ask any questions, any question to Jill or?
Actually make a motion and then we'll.
Oh, I guess, yeah, we should do the motions, yeah, all right, so we take a, make a move. All right, all in favor, so, no, excuse me, I'm all screwed up now. Uh, looking for a motion to approve the resolution, number twenty-three dash fifteen, EPNO levy.
So moved.
Moved, and I will second. All right, and now, um.
Questions?
Yeah, um, yeah, motion to question for discussion.
Just, just a clarification, when we do the levies, is there a no statement also, or is that just on the?
There's a no state, there, we will be publicizing for a no statement. For both.
For what or both?
For both.
For what, I, I didn't hear.
Uh, on the ballot, there's a pro con, a pro and a con statement, and as a district, we need to publicize for the. Pro and the con statement.
Oh, both of them?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
We have somebody, do we have somebody who's, um, skilled in the English language, who can write that?
Lots of arms.
Lots of arms and a huzz.
I believe our citizens committee will write the pro.
Okay.
Oh, there are no more questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Oh, motion passes. All right, next we're on to resolution number twenty-three sixteen for the bond election, this is for building of the schools. Of the high school and the Western Bules and all that for all the schools.
Right, this is a, a bond at eighty-nine point one million dollars, it'll provide for safety and security updates and, uh, at. RPS, GMS and RMS, it would also provide for play structures. To be implemented at our PS and GMS, and it would provide for a. Uh, new high school to be built on the existing property. Where current high school sits, not, uh, not a, well, you understand what I mean.
Tongue twister.
Yes.
All right, but board members, um, like to make a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a second, okay, now, uh, all in favor of debate, any questions? Any discussions?
Well, I have a general question. How is the, is there anybody online right now? Can they ask questions about this bond at this time, or do they have, if there's anybody online, I don't know if there's anybody online. But if there's anybody on there, can they ask questions about that at this time, or do they have to wait till the end?
Uh, at this point, Thomas, they would have, uh, been required, the number three thing we did on our agenda. Um, they would have made co, public comment after we, uh.
At the, at the beginning, okay, but I knew there's one at the end also, so I didn't know.
Those are for, those are for items that are not on our agenda.
Okay, okay.
Is what the one at the end is, but I'm assuming it could still be used for public comment for things that are on our agenda. I would, I would take that, could also be used for that also.
Okay, I was, I was just curious, cause I, oh.
It's all good, all good, yeah, this is a, this is the important one, this is for the building, um. Yeah, uh, any other discussion? And this would be on fourth February?
This will be on February thirteenth ballot.
Great, thirteen, that's not on a Friday, is it?
It is not, it's on Tuesday.
Made me think of, I'm like, oh, okay, it's on Friday the thirteenth, I think we're okay. All right, board members, at this point in time, we'd like to make a motion to, um.
Thomas, Thomas moved. All right, seconded.
Moved and seconded, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
If you wouldn't have said that, I would have been thinking of a moment, because I have learned, I have, I have forgotten.
And then I thought we had to make a voice quote after that to approve.
You, you've done it right.
I've done it correctly, yeah, because we did have to have a voice quote, all right, we are done with that, that motion passes, we will be on the ballot. Wonderful, okay. Wonderful, okay, next. School improvement plans.
These are the school improvement plans that require approval by the board every year.
This is what we went to earlier?
This is what this presented, yes.
Right, do we need to do these individually, or can we do these all as a group? All right, board members, is there, do we have any uh questions, I thought we were given a pretty thorough explanation of these earlier tonight? So.
Yeah.
Like to take a motion to approve grouping these all together. For our school improvement plans for twenty-three, twenty-four. You have a second or a first?
So moved.
Move.
One second.
One a second? All right. Any discussion? There are no discussions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You're not opposed, motion passes. Didn't write that down. All right, at this time, we are open for public comments, um do we have anybody signed in?
There is no one signed in, and the person online says they have, they do not want to comment on anything.
All right, well, thank you for being here tonight, and with that, um. We want to wait thirty seconds or anything, to make sure we give everybody an opportunity to show up at our board meetings. All right, with that, uh we will adjourn the meeting.